Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and before we get really underway, I would just like to give a tip of the hat to Sam Alexander, who has been helping us out, his interim town planner, while the town has been interviewing and has hired a new town planner who starts May 22nd, this coming Monday. So this is our last meeting with Sam, and Sam, thank you very much, you've been very thorough. Appreciate it.
Good job, Seth.
And at the same time, I'd really like everybody to recognize Gail Phoenix's efforts during this process. She has absolutely taken on a lot of burden to keep the Town Planning Office rolling and providing us with a lot of information that is so helpful.
Gail and Sam filled a lot of gaps in the interim.
Yes.
Big shoes to fill.
Yeah. Okay. So this evening, we have Ryan Deasy, Chuck Sheen, myself, Ben Filbrick, Fred Dykman, and Gary Belkey will be sitting in for Lynn, who is absent, and if Marge shows up, she can be our alternate for the evening. First up, minutes, 17:24 from May 2nd. Do I hear?
Mr. Chairman, oh, sorry. Make a motion to approve the items as written.
Second by Fred, any discussion?
Second, I'm sorry.
No, we have a second. Ryan was the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Sam?
So, agenda item three, I'm sorry, agenda item four, correspondence. There's one item of correspondence in your packet. This is a letter dated May 1st. It's signed by four former Planning and Zoning Commission chairs, and this pertains to short-term rentals and housing affordability. And I think this would be especially important for this commission to consider during your So moving on, agenda item 5D, administrative review. First item under consideration is application 23-101ZON, Stonington Housing Authority. It's a zoning permit application for placement of a 12-by-20 pavilion at the Edith K Richmond Homes, property at 45 Sisk Drive, Pawtucket, Assessor's Map, 14, Block 14, Lot 19, in the RH10 zone. This application's before the commission because it's a structure that isn't an accessory to a single-family home, so this commission would review any application like that. It's located very interior to this property. It isn't near any lot lines or anything like that. The applicant also would be pouring a concrete patio underneath the pavilion and then providing some landscaping as well.
So you don't have any issues with it with the town? There's nothing?
No, it's very straightforward. It complies with zoning.
Are you motion on this application?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the application as submitted.
Thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I got this one over here. Thank you, Chuck. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Moving on to 5D 2. This is not, in a sense, an application. This is concerning an application that was approved on April 18th for a two-lot subdivision. The reference number for that is PG 2235SD Old Stone Ridge LLC. This is a subdivision on Montauk Avenue, which you're all familiar with. Late Friday, staff received a brief from attorney Ted Ladwig, and it was concerning stipulation of approval number 10. And I'll read stipulation of approval number 10. It says, "Applicant shall pay 50% of the fee in lieu of open space upon transference of Lot 1 and the sooner of (a) the transference of Lot 2, or (b) prior to any approvals for construction of any structures on Lot 2. A lien shall be placed on the property prior to or concurrent with the recording of the final subdivision plan. After the fee is paid for an individual lot, the town shall release the lien on the land evidence records." That stipulation of approval was apparently improper, and we have concurrence from the town's attorney on that. So the way the statute actually reads is that we can't, the fee in lieu of open space, it's paid, you know, a fair portion of that, in this case, 50-50, is paid with the transference of each lot. We were understanding that one of the lots wasn't going to be transferred, it was going to remain in the hands of the owner. So that was a reason the motion was crafted that way. We apparently don't have any authority under state statute to do it that way. So what will happen is a lien will just be placed on that Lot 2, and some years down the line, it'll be paid. Lot 1, of course, we understand that will be transferred, so we would expect that at least, that 50% of the open space fee in lieu be paid relatively soon. Town attorney doesn't believe that any action is required here by commission, but that the appropriate staff would just adhere to the way that the law is written. They wouldn't condition any building permits or anything on payment of that fee.
Everybody follow that?
Not exactly. Is it payable as each lot is sold and transferred, or payable after both are sold?
It's payable as each lot is sold and transferred. So 50% is tied.
I don't think that's clear in the agenda.
Yep.
That's clear if we just say it that way.
Yep.
But there's no vote?
Payable upon sale and transfer of each lot.
Right. Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Is that your understanding also crucial?
The statute is very clear.
And please state your name for the record. I know who you are, but...
Attorney Ladwig for the applicant, Old Stone Ridge LLC. And I drafted the, you know, the brief that I submitted to town staff last week. My concern, folks, is not that anybody's arguing with my interpretation. Mercifully, that's not the case here tonight. My concern is the not taking any action by vote tonight leaves the building official and potentially the zoning official, but more particularly the building official, without any clear guidance, because even though Lot 1 will be sold and the open space, you know, fee in lieu will be paid, half the fee will be paid at the time of the conveyance of the smaller of the two lots. The larger of the two lots will certainly be built upon before it's sold or conveyed. And therefore, they will have, they will seek a building permit and a zoning permit first, and then a building permit. And basically, without any action by this commission tonight, you leave those people on their own, with an interpretation, but without any solid guidance from the commission regarding that payment. What I prefer is, I'm going to follow the language of the agenda, to modify the stipulation of approval number 10 to indicate that the open space fee is payable upon the sale/transfer of ownership of both, or you could say each lot. That tells the zoning enforcement officer, yes, he or she can issue the zoning permit, and yes, it tells the building official that, yes, he or she can issue the building permit before that lot would be sold. The statute and your own regulations are crystal clear on this. There's no real, you know, room for interpretation. I spoke with attorney Landregan before he left on vacation. I spoke with, you know, with Mr. Alexander late last Friday. There's really no argument about this. There's no discussion. By the same token, I think we're being a little unkind to the zoning official and the building official if you don't take a vote, rescind the, rescind item, stipulation number 10, and impose a new item number 10.
Are we allowed to do that? How's that to...
In our notes, the town attorney says, has given the opinion that no action is required by the commission. So now I am confused. I thought I was clear before. Sam, can you shed light on this?
Yeah, the town attorney indicated we don't, the commission wouldn't need to take any action, but if a condition is not legally enforceable, then the staff, you know, the appropriate staff would just follow what is legally enforceable. Yeah.
Just imagine going into the building official with a building permit application, say, "I would like, I'd like a building permit, please." He says, "Yes, but stipulation number 10," says, "you've got to pay me half the fee in lieu of open space." And the poor applicant says, "Well, no, I don't. That, you know, that stipulation is null and void, ab initio, as judges are want to, you know, to claim it." But that's a legal argument that you don't want to have the applicant for the building permit have to make at that time, or the building official have to interpret at that time, when right now, standing here tonight, I wish Jeff were here, but he's in a better place. He says, "I'm not going, I'm going to be in Ireland that night." But here we are tonight, and you guys can eliminate all of that vagary, all of that. It's not really ambiguous, but they, being the zoning enforcement officer and the building official, are left with a stipulation which is void. How do they know that?
So if I may ask, Ben, so first of all, can we go back on something that's approved and say, "Okay, based on a legal opinion, that stipulation is null and void"? Is that something we could do?
I don't know.
I, that's...
I'm not a lawyer.
Yeah, I don't, because I don't want to, if we go back and, does that open a Pandora's box?
Can you modify, can you modify the application?
Right.
Make sure to review.
Right.
Or an approval.
Sam?
I'm not sure, and I think at the very least, you would want the town attorney to have a part in that.
Agreed.
Yeah.
When does attorney Landregan return? Do you know?
I could tell you.
Ted, do you know when he returns?
Do I know when he's coming back?
Yeah. Two weeks.
By the end of the month, you know, I'm sure. I'm sure he'd be here by the first meeting in June.
He returns on May 31st.
Okay.
I mean, I have no objection to continuing this until, until he has, you know, an opportunity to weigh in on that question, because I don't think there's any, there's no question in my mind that he's going to come to the conclusion that, yep, that stipulation needs to be clarified.
Right.
So it's not void.
The notes we have are in direct opposite of what you're sending to us tonight, so I think it'd be best if you guys could hammer that out before our next session, if that's all right with you.
I think, yeah, absolutely, it's all right with me.
Okay.
More than happy.
Okay.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
I'll see you at your next meeting.
Not next week.
Next meeting.
Next meeting. Yep, great. Thank you, sir. Is that all right with you, Sam? We're going to do that? Get the attorneys to figure it out?
Yeah. I think you're, I think you're spot on.
So I guess that brings us to our public hearing, correct, Sam? No other old business?
Uh, right.
Okay. You're on, Fred.
You want to go?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I mean, you mean the...
No, no, the one that's continued.
No, you don't need to read that.
Okay. Okay. Pursuant to the general statutes of the State of Connecticut, revision of 1958, and all amendments thereto, and pursuant to the zoning regulations for the town of Stonington, Connecticut, the Planning and Zoning Commission hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing at the Stonington Board of Education District Office, 40 Field Street, Pawtucket, Connecticut, on Tuesday, May 16th, at 7:00 PM, on the following application. PG 2307 SUP and GPP Mystic Sahara Janand LLC, S. Terenzia, Special Use and Groundwater Protection Permit Applications for Construction of a New 80 Room Hotel, 40,000-plus Square Feet, with Associated Landscaping and Parking. Property located at 321 Liberty Street, Pawtucket, Assessor's Map, 17, Block 3, Lot 4, Zone HI60. At such hearing, any party may appear in person or be represented by an agent or by an attorney. Any disabled person requiring auxiliary aids or services for effective communication or access, it's a little late for this, should contact the Department of Planning at 860-535-5095 10 days prior to the hearing day.
Thank you, Fred. All right. For this public hearing seated this evening will be Ryan Deasy, Chuck Sheen, myself, Ben Filbrick, Fred Dykman, and Gary Belkey. There is a sign-up sheet on that little table right by the doorway for those who would like to speak later on in the meeting. First up, we'll have the applicant. We'll have, when they're all done with their presentation, we'll move over to the public input, and we may be peppering the applicant with questions from the board during the whole process. There'll be rebuttal by the applicant, staff input, further board questions, and we'll see if we close the hearing and vote this evening or not. We'll see how it all goes. Sergio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Can you hear me okay? We're going to see if this technology we can get working. There we go. It's looking for me. I have some boards, too, if anyone wants to look at physical paper, I know. But we'll, everything will be presented up on the screen.
Doubly helpful. Thank you.
I'm going to have to toggle through a few different plans here, so be patient with me as they get pulled up. For the record, Sergio Terenzia with Terenzia and Associates, offices at 99 Mechanic Street, Pawtucket, Connecticut. I am the president and principal of Terenzian Associates. The application that was filed with you, with your Planning and Zoning Department, was prepared by my office and my responsible charge. We pulled together a few different consultants who are here this evening. The land survey was prepared by my office and my land surveyor, and I did the engineering, engineered site plans. With me tonight is Mike Dion from BL Companies. He's our traffic engineer. Tim Garrish is our landscape architect, and Richard Jike, goes by Jake Jones, he is our project architect. And the owner is Mukesh Patel, and he is also here if there's any questions of any of them. The order of operations tonight, I'll be giving an overview of the application and the site plan, provide you some details on how we got to this, how we got to this place of where the site, that a lot of time and effort went in. We started this process over two years ago. Mr. Patel has owned the property, I believe, since 2018, when it was purchased from the Maine family. And there's some particular nuances that I will go through in my presentation, because this piece of land was carved out from a larger piece of land through some subdivisions and tied to the Tractor Supply, which I will, which I will go through. So the plan I have up for you now, just for some context, we're located at 321 Liberty Street, map 17, Block 3, Lot 4. I believe many of you are aware of the location, the Hartford Healthcare Building across the street and to the north, LaSalle Carpets, that building right across the street. We are directly adjacent to and share a common drive with the Tractor Supply lot, and my client owns the hotel to the north of that, the La Quinta. To the south, we have the park and ride, the state property parking lot. This site plan shows a blue line and a red line. Just for context, we have obtained an inland wetlands and water course commission approval for this site design. Hasn't been many, very many changes as we've gone from the wetlands approval to our special use permit plan that's submitted to you this evening. The blue line represents the wetland or the water course. The Pawtucket River is to the east, pretty significantly down gradient and away from where this development is going to be taking place. There is a water course that runs southerly along this property, and that is a, that discharges a culvert that runs under Route 2 from points west. So that, that is an intermittent stream that runs down gradient and eventually discharges to the wetlands associated with the Pawtucket River and that floodplain in there. Going to bring up our site plan. You can see that there's, these lines, these dashed lines all along the easterly portion of the property are all of the flood hazard areas. We are well without, outside of any flood hazard area, and this site slopes rather steeply in areas from Liberty Street down to the river. And I think many of you have frequented Tractor Supply and see that they're pretty far down low in the, in the land profile. They have a, basically a slope in front of them, and the access drive is, goes down from Route 2 to access their parking area. Some of the considerations that we made when we proposed this hotel, at one point, it was in the parking area and was parallel, the length of the building was parallel to Route 2. The challenge that we have with a hotel in this location, by putting it so low as, similar to Tractor Supply, is that we would require a pumping system to pump the wastewater from the hotel. And considering it's an 80-room hotel, that's not a small system, and something that needs to be robust, have backups for backups pumps to get up to Route 2, because if you have a failure with an 80-room hotel in the middle of the summer, that's not a good situation, even if you have your backups for backups. So that was one of the critical items that we looked at, and we spent over a year trying to obtain, actually, an easement through the Tractor Supply property, connect it back onto my client's property, run it in a gravity all the way down to the pump station, which is located on Way Rock Road. Fortunately, that, after about a year, year and a half of trying to negotiate with that property owner, who has a real estate develop, a real estate broker company that has hundreds of properties and they are out in California, they didn't really give a damn about providing and giving us any type of easement across their property, even though we were going to allow them to tie in. Made a lot of sense, because if that Tractor Supply, they currently pump up to Route 2 to the sanitary system. If that were to change to a restaurant or something that has a more intensive use, we were going to let, you know, negotiate such which they could tie in in the future. So bringing it back to this plan, well, we also tried to navigate going around the property, because my client does own property that goes around Tractor Supply, but we found that to be not as cost-effective and a bit cumbersome and really close to the wetlands. To the Wetlands Commission's credit, they entertained it, but it was just something that we did not want to pursue. So after factoring all that in, we came to this location of the proposed hotel. Why do I bring all this up? I just want to let you know, a lot of thought and alternative evaluation went into this plan. So the hotel, as you can see, is more or less, the length of it is perpendicular to Route 2, along the access drive that runs in this direction, which is mutually shared by easement with Tractor Supply. So my client owns the property in which the driveway is located, but it is subject to an access easement that benefits the Tractor Supply property. And that was put into place before my client even purchased the property. So this, the hotel, by putting it in this location, we can get it up high enough, whereas we can gravity feed the sewer, and we checked the sewer, and I was in Route 2 doing it myself at an hour where there wasn't much traffic, but it was still a pretty trying experience. But we verified the building sewer elevation, and we've worked with the Water Pollution Control Authority. We, you'll see that we do have the appropriate approval from them to tie in to that system, and they can handle the additional capacity in their, in the sewer system. And we can do that for all of the rooms of the hotel, because they are elevated above or at an elevation where we can get a gravity line in, which eliminates that precarious situation of needing to pump 80 rooms. Now, the back of the building, and Mr. Jones will get into this a little bit more, when you look at his architectural plans, represent, is five stories, because that last story is buried into the slope. There are four stories. It'll read four stories from the front and five stories from the back. So that one fifth story, or at least it's only about a half the building, will need to be pumped up, but that is, consists of offices, the concierge where you're going to be checking in. So it's not a heavy, heavy flow should that go down there. We still have the capacity for, for the gravity. I'll go to the next sheet here, if I can slide this up just a little bit, and zoom in a little bit. So the access to the site, as I mentioned, is this access drive, and has two-way out for right and left, and one way in. Mike Dion will go into a little bit more of the traffic study that he did. He has a presentation for you, so I'll let him go into those details. But basically, this, the site has the, as I mentioned, the building perpendicular. You come in and access across, you know, you're going to be coming down past the building, and then there's two means of egress. We originally had one, but I think it's been, I don't know if, Sam, were you providing We originally had one, but I think it's been, I don't know if, Sam, did, were you provided the letter from the fire department that they have signed off on this, this recent set of plans?
Yeah.
I, yeah, I have a copy of it if you need it entered into the record or unless you have it.
I didn't.
Okay. Does the commission need to see it or are they?
Um.
I have copies of it.
I'm unaware of whether or not to pack it.
Okay.
I didn't think it would be.
Okay. I have copies of it and I can hand it out to you. But the point being is that we worked with the fire department and they, Chief Burns was adamant that he would have a second means of egress out of this parking lot. So we reworked the parking, and that's not reflected on the plans that you have in your packet because it came after, I knew, I worked with them after it was submitted.
Yeah, I don't think we've seen that letter.
So this is that plan.
The new plan revised since May 2nd.
Since the May 2nd, this plan has been changed to accommodate the fire department.
So your dumpster moved?
So your plan shows parking and a dumpster in this area.
Yeah.
We reconfigured it, we moved the dumpster over to this spot. We had to get our, meet our parking quota for the 80 rooms, but then that opened us up to get this second means of egress out. And the reason why we were avoiding it, because there's a significant amount of grade change from here to here. You'll see on the grading plan, which I'll show you in a moment, we had to make some adjustments to the grading. Overall, I think it's going to be a better design for fire safety as Mr. Burns and Mr., and Chief Burns and Mar, and Byron, Mr. Stillman, your fire marshal have, have pointed out. We've also worked through some other details with them, one of which does show up on your plan is a emergency fire access to, on the other side of the building here. And to make this a bit more non-conspicuous, we're going to make this a reinforced turf, some kind of paver system so grass can grow through it, since we don't want to invite people to think that this is an entrance and come in the front of the building. We want to direct people to the back. So, in my conversations with Chief Burns, he said, "We, we are proposing a chain gate here just so people don't come in." He was a little bit more lax on it, he said, "Keep it open for now, and then if it becomes a problem, we can always gate it off." So that's just something I wanted to bring to the commission's attention. I will add, since we're in the front of the building, we're going to be adding in the sidewalk, which will be a continuation of the one from Tractor Supply, and it'll terminate at the property boundary where there is a driveway servicing the residential property next door. I believe it was also requested that there be a, an access to the door in the front. I don't recall if that came through Architectural Review Board. One of my associates may be able to confirm, but regardless, that was also added to the plan. It's not the formal entrance, we want everyone to come into the back of the building, but it's, it's still something that was requested, I believe. The parking, there's really not any frills with it, it's asphalt paved parking with the, with the prerequisite required landscaping. Once again, Mr. Garrish can go into all the beautiful and wonderful plants that he's, he's planted there, both on the buffer and in the landscape islands. We have proposed lighting in that parking lot. As you know, with hotels, they run 24/7, so lighting is important for safety and security. We have put the minimal amount of poles in the parking lot. That photometric plan in that part, that, that has not significantly changed, if at all, with this, this new configuration. One thing that was commented was the lighting on the building, so that we don't have lighting up way high, that would disturb the neighboring property. We were requested to bring that lighting on the side of the building down only to the first floor. And so although on the north side of the building, we will have lighting that goes up the side of the building, and you'll, you'll be able to see that in the renderings and the, the architectural plans that'll, that will be brought up. On the south side of the building, we're only going to be putting sconces on the, on the side that's on the first floor. Stormwater management, obviously very important in your groundwater protection area. You'll see this portion of the site here, although it doesn't show up on this plan, I'll, I'll switch to another one, is subject to an easement. Let me see if I can bring up a better plan to articulate that. Sorry, let's see if we can do that. Okay. So this stormwater basin is existing down here, and it sur, currently serves the Tractor Supply. So all the stormwater coming off the Tractor Supply enters into this for bay, and then it overflows into the detention, the, the formal detention area where it's held. And then it, it, there's an overflow, but there's also a level spreader system further down. I don't know if it shows up on this plan, it's probably on a different one, I'll get to that. One thing I want to emphasize is that the Tractor Supply, when it was designed and permitted, was designed with this development of this parcel in mind. So there was some forethought in when that was permitted. The easement is in benefit of the Tractor Supply property for their stormwater, but this basin is designed to handle the impervious surface from this development. We went back and checked those calculations because I didn't want to go in blindly and just say, "Yeah, it's okay, we should be able to put it in there." So we did our own evaluation and we confirmed, they actually made a, a calculation error on how much, there was a discrepancy between the calculation and how much they said was allowed to be sent to this basin. So we confirmed that it was, that, that, that the basin could adequately handle it. We've, all of the stormwater from the roof, all pervious area, the parking lots, all can be mitigated and handled by this, this stormwater management feature. The parking lot is collected in a series of catch basins, they will have deep sumps and hoods, and the town engineer has require, recommended, more required, I should say, that we put in a hydrodynamic separator. I didn't necessarily agree with his, with, with his assessment. His reasoning was that if there's any potential spills on this property and we are in a groundwater protection area, that that hydrodynamic separator will service to hold those spills back before they get into the, the stormwater basin. My client has, I've discussed it with my client, and he has agreed that we can accommodate that. It is not reflected on this plan, but we, it's something easily that can be added in with a bypass, but in line with, with the system. And the trick to those systems is that they only handle the first one inch or the, the very first, first flush of, of stormwater to separate solids more effectively than just a regular catch basin or oil-water separator. And the solids and then, but the trick to them is they need to be maintained, so we will need a maintenance plan. And we have full, full intentions of incorporating that into the plan per the, per the town engineer's recommendation. So that's one thing that's not shown on this plan. But you can see how the...
Excuse me, sir, where does that get located?
I'm sorry, say it again.
Where does it get located? I'm a novice at this, is it in every catch basin or one main one or?
No, we will put it in the, there's a, so I'm going to refer to this plan. So you see all these catch basins, how they're connected?
Yeah.
This is a manhole right here.
Yes.
So all of, we need to treat the parking lot, the, the roof, we don't need to run through a hydrodynamic separator. It's, it's for the pollutants that fall on the parking area, on the asphalt. So what we'll do is we'll probably move this catch basin more into the parking lot and put a bypass system in with a couple other structures, but everything will confluence there, and that's where it'll get the treatment. And I believe it's, there's a stipulation tonight that we need to have the town engineer's final approval on the final plans. We're happy to accommodate that, that'll give us time to size this appropriately, pick out something that's going to be cost-effective for my client, and something that we, he knows he can maintain effectively. So I also alluded to this level spreader, this was part of the original design, I thought it was pretty, I, I thought it was pretty interesting, the way they handled it. But basically, this has a, you know, a high-level overflow, but the, this has a piped outlet and additional storage and treatment in these 12-unit, these are large four-by-four galleys down in this area. And like I said, this was all approved before me, before we came, came into the scene, so we, we figured we would highlight it, and it is something, I think that they boasted additional treatment considering they're in a groundwater protection area. So I think the level of stormwater treatment, we're far, we, we will meet and far exceed what the, what the standard is for, for this, for this area.
Sir, I happened to drive over there before this meeting, and it's totally overgrown down in there, right?
I concur with you. There's something that the Wetlands Commission also pointed out.
Okay, it looked like where the basin might be.
It has not been maintained properly.
Okay.
We have recognized that, and up till now, it has not been the responsibility of my client because he hasn't developed anything. It really is the, it's really an enforcement issue associated with the Tractor Supply, excuse me, Tractor Supply. My client has spoken to the manager there, and I, I think going forward, we're definitely going to be having a more collaborative effort per the agreement to make sure it's maintained properly. And it's something that the Wetlands Commission had a really tough time swallowing because it's, there's a lot of vaults, there's a lot of trash, it's overgrown, and, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a repetitive issue that I see on projects. Once we walk away, I'm only so effective up until the time where I get the permits and sometimes through construction, but the owner needs to be responsible for the perpetual maintenance. And unfortunately, I don't think Candace Palmer is going around, you know, inspecting all of these as, you know, on a, given her schedule and which, you know, as much enforcement she can do as one person.
The other thing I noticed is there's a catch basin right where your driveway, Tractor Supply comes east downhill and it takes a hard left to get into their parking lot.
Yep.
There's a catch basin right in that pocket corner.
Right here.
Yeah. There's quite a bit of water flowing through there. I was like, huh.
I didn't, I didn't notice that, but even in dry, in dry conditions, you saw water flowing in?
What water is that?
It could be INI, infiltration and, from groundwater. I, I don't know. That's a separate system, we won't be in, we won't be going into it. If that's something that, that they need to address because it's a, it's something that they're, they're, an issue with their system, it might be something that needs to be brought to their attention.
Okay, thank you.
But, but our system will be completely independent except for the discharge to the shared resource, which is the stormwater basin. And this actually shows the pipe coming out, there's some riprap, we call this, you know, stilling basin to slow that water down, allow those sediments to fall out, and then it overflowed, there's a, there's a berm here, but there is a large tree growing on that, and that is not by design. This, 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 this basin, and has been recognized by your peer reviewing engineer and your town engineer that this needs to be completely cleaned out and rehauled, and we, we intend to do that. It's, it's a stipulation, and it, I believe it's a note on my plan as well. So I've covered stormwater, we've covered the wastewater, lighting, parking, the water system, we require, this is the Westerly, Westerly's water system in this area. We have gone through their required checklist of items to make sure that we have adequate pressure and water supply for this use, and that's been confirmed by their consultant that, that this connection can be made. I also consulted with the fire department on this, and they requested that we bring in a sprinkler, dedicated sprinkler line and domestic line, and add a couple of fire hydrants. So those have been accommodated. One of the, I'll, I'll point them out for you, one of them, they wanted a fire hydrant at the intersection of Liberty Street, if I can find it right here. These plans get so muddled with all the different ones, and then they wanted one towards the other end of the, the hotel. And you can see on this plan, just to, back to the grading, we're, you know, we're high up on, towards Liberty Street, we're even a little lower than Liberty Street, you can see, we're up at like 76 around the building, we're getting around 73, and then, you know, our, our walkout area is around 60. So we lose that grade, a little bit steeper on this side because we wanted to accommodate a little bit more flat area in front of the building, and I think that was something that the Architecture Review Board appreciated, that gave it a little more curb appeal. And I think Tim will show that we're not flooding this, this, this whole area with a lot of plants, we're going to keep it kind of open and spacious and, and, and just kind of grassy area with, with the pre, pre-required street trees. You'll see a heavy buffer on this side towards the residence and along the back. When we get to the landscape plans, I'll let Tim go into that. I believe that addresses the majority of my presentation. If it's okay, I'll go to my traffic engineer, unless you want to have questions in between, it's, it's up to you, Mr. Chair.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure, Corida.
That's all right.
I do too.
Okay. In the parking lot, and maybe this is a simple ADA requirement that I'm not up on, you have spacing between handicap parking, one spot is five feet in between and the next one is eight feet, is that for the mechanical usage of a wheelchair or something?
Probably van access, right? One is van access, one is not.
Okay.
Correct.
So that's, those are for larger, slight?
Yes.
You'll see.
Van access, has a wider aisle.
I knew you'd know.
Sorry.
That's fine.
Sorry Chuck, didn't want to steal your thunder. But you'll see, there's an eight-foot and an eight-foot for a total of 16.
Yep.
And then you got a 10 and a 5, so I forget which is which, what's standard and what's van, I'm pretty sure the 8 and the 8 is standard for a van, has a wider
Right.
area for, for handicap, for the vans.
Okay, that's what I figured, I just wanted to confirm.
Right, for, for wheelchair access.
All righty. And I'll wait for my other question, go ahead, if you have stuff, Ryan, oh Chuck.
Just, if you could explain on the plan where the detention basin is located and how the stilling basin or, or whatever the level spreader is, how that functions in concert with the detent, is it a detention basin or a retention basin?
Believe it's a...
It just says drainage basin, so I, I don't know which it is.
I'm going to have to just pull up the, I have the Tractor Supply report and my report here, I might, I might reference exactly what it is. I don't believe it's in, I don't believe it was designed with infiltration capacity.
If you can't pull it up easily, I'm just interested in the general direction that the water heads offsite. You don't have to delay, this isn't, you know, earth-shattering stuff, so.
I think I should have it, I have the other report, I can definitely get that info for you.
That's fine. Maybe, maybe while you're...
They, they called it a water quality basin.
Okay.
With a sediment for bay.
It would be interesting to know if it's detention or retention.
I can find that out. I have the...
You may be able to look at your calculations and tell if there's an overflow or not. And the stilling basin is, is like roof drainage, go to the stilling basin and surface water go to a different basin, is that the way it works?
No, everything will confluence in, into that, that stilling basin, it's, it's basically a sediment for, it's the sediment for bay. The stilling basin portion.
And how does the, how does the stilling basin overtop, everything flows to the south?
Correct, there's, this, this is the berm here.
And the overtopping velocity is controlled by the length of the weir, is that, is that the way that the velocity is controlled over the, I guess it's the south side?
Yeah, it, it's this, this area here, I believe it might be even riprap, but it's been grown over so much.
Okay.
But I have the original report, I can look that up for you.
Is there a structure that it overflows through, or does it cascade over the weir on the south side?
No, that's, oh, on the, on the south side, I think there's just an outlet structure and then, you can see here...
That's fine, as long as it's controlled by an outlet structure, I'm fine, and there's calculations, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yep, yeah, we ran all the calculations, but see how this, this area in here, these, these contours meet, these are as constructed. So there is an overflow, and I believe this is the emergency overflow.
Okay, so there's a controlled, there's a controlled outlet.
Controlled outlet.
Stage discharge, stage storage curve was developed for it, and all of that was reviewed by the town engineer.
Correct.
Perfect. That's, addresses my question. Thank you, sir.
Is there any other questions for me before I bring up my traffic?
I have a couple of other site-related questions, but I'll, we'll get into the other part of the presentation first.
So I'll invite Mike Dion to the podium, he's going to give you a overview of the traffic study. I think this should work for you.
We'll see.
Okay. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, Mike Dion with BL Companies, 355 Research Parkway in Merritton, Connecticut. I am a professional engineer and a professional traffic operations engineer and I lead the traffic group there. So I'll talk about the traffic. I know that's everybody's biggest concern. Can I get it on the screen?
You just gotta switch it.
Oh, okay. So instead of just me talking numbers and letters at everybody, I did want to prepare something for everybody to look at and review that goes through my report. So typically, why do we do a traffic impact study? It's, it's to look at what impact the development will have on the neighborhood and the adjacent street network and also to recommend any mitigation that is going to be needed with this development. So what do we look at? We look at the no build condition, which is the condition without the site there and then the build condition. And what periods do we look at? We look at typically the AM commuter hour, the PM commuter hour, because that's when the most traffic is on the road. That's going to impact the neighborhoods, people coming from their house, going to work, coming home. And then on per town standard, we looked at the Saturday midday shopping peak as well. And what we did for this project is we did do data collection at three intersections. Did one to the north, one to the south, and then the main driveway itself with, that's shared with Tractor Supply. The traffic counts were done in March 9th and 11th of this past year. We also went out in the field and took a photographic inventory and we also wanted to verify any information we got from the DOT pertaining to their traffic signals to make sure that it's what they have is on record is what's actually out there. And then they actually have historical traffic counts in the area too, that we compared things to. And coincidentally, BL Companies did the medical office building up north of this site before my time there, so about 10 years ago, and the traffic volumes were pretty similar. So what do we look at with the no build condition? It's, it represents the traffic that's out there now without this development. And what we'd include in that is traffic from any, any other planned developments. Now, we did reach out to the town planner back in March. I know he was just coming in and going out and a very nice woman at the office got back to me and said there were no other approved developments. We reached out to the Connecticut DOT and there were no other developments that they're aware of.
Excuse me, what, excuse me, you mean in that area?
Yes, in that area. That would impact the traffic on that, at that site.
All right. Because we do have an open hearing on a riverhead supply building materials up the road a mile?
I think something that size.
Everybody knows about, I mean, the DOT knows about it?
Yeah. We reached out, the town said nothing, so maybe this was in before it, this was back in March. I don't know how open that, how long that's been there. And they may not consider it as generating enough traffic to impact.
I don't know what, yeah.
Intersections down to the south.
Right.
So, of course, we look at, no, of course.
Thank you.
We looked at the traffic that's coming in and out of the shared driveway out there. We also projected the traffic counts out to 2024, which is when we're hoping that this hotel will be under construction. And what we do is we take the generated traffic from that and we'll distribute it out to the network. What we typically use for our trip generation data is the Institute of Transportation Engineers' Trip Generation Manual. Institute of Transportation Engineers has been around for about 90 years, collecting traffic data for different land uses for about 50 years. And they update it periodically, they are up to the 11th edition right now. So what we did, we took that data, we, we get the trips generated for our site, we distribute it to the network and what we have there is our no build condition that we looked at, plus the new site traffic is our build condition that we're looking at. And when we look at the ITE and All Suites Hotel, this, they actually do have a category for an All Suites Hotel, but it didn't have very much data. So what we did is we just used the hotel data because it was actually more conservative, it showed more trips that were generated. So we're looking at in the AM about 37 peak hour trips coming and going, 2116. PM peak hour about 47 and then the Saturday midday peak about 57 trips are generated. One other thing that we did look at out there is the site distances. There are two site distances that you look at for an intersection. One is called intersection site distance, which is for cars that are turning out of the driveway, taking a left or right to the, so that they have enough site distance to see cars coming. And the other one that we look at is stopping site distance, which is a car on the main road on Liberty Street that could see somebody turning out and would have enough time to stop before they could impact them. So intersection site distance is actually more strict, so we did look at that and we do meet this, this site distance criteria out there.
And you, and your sight lines are okay if you're trying to take a left?
As long as they plant nothing in the.
If you're trying to take a left out of the tractor, out of your new driveway, it's okay to the left?
Yes. Yeah, we took a look at it and there is, there is a hill there, but it's, there's enough distance.
Well, there's a large sycamore tree about 100 feet away, it's not on your property.
It's not in the site triangle. The site triangle is measured.
I had, I had to creep across the white line so I could see who is coming northbound before I could make my jump.
Coming out of the hole there.
Yes, yeah, and so when you're measuring.
Over the bank is, is difficult. Is that going to get worse as a result of, of the hill that's going in in front of the top?
Looking to the left, no. As long as they do not increase it above the three, as long as it's not above the three foot. We have a, what we look at with site distance is looking at three and a half feet, which is where you're sitting at typically in a car, two or three and a half foot height for a car coming at you. And as long as there's nothing in that three and a half foot height that's impacting your site, you should be all set.
And you analyzed that intersectional site?
Yes, yep. We went out in the field and took a look and we do meet the criteria.
From what point back from?
15 feet back from the white line, from the shoulder line.
The curb?
Yes, from the shoulder line. So it's not the edge of road, it's the shoulder line, the edge of travelway, you measure 15 feet back from there.
Driver's eyes, 18 feet back from the gutter.
It's 15 feet back from the shoulder line. So the gutter line is if you're talking the curb.
Yeah.
So that, it's the actual shoulder line out there.
Shoulder.
Yes, yep.
Okay. That makes me feel a little better.
Yep, so that's where you measure from. And actually DOT lets you go down to 13 feet, but we did measure the 15 feet back.
Because this is the seating, it appears as though you're driving down a grade, no real level area adjacent to the edge of road where the driver's height of eye would be, somewhere in that vicinity. And it appears as though there would be obstruction there. You're saying there isn't?
Nope, yep, we took a look.
Well, actually the sidewalk will help too, if there's any growth.
Yep. Sure. And I'll, I'll finish up with, you know, we, we take all this data, we put it into a traffic program called Syncro. It measures delay and it comes up with a letter grade called level of service out there for the intersections. And it's just like you're in school, A being the best, F being the worst, level of service D is acceptable to the Connecticut Department of Transportation. The intersections out there, they all work satisfactorily. There's two signalized intersections, one to the north at White Rock Ridge, one to the south of Veterans Way. They both work, operate in As and Bs, which is great. We do have the site driveway itself, which is stop controlled, operates at a C and a D. We do have a degradation from a C to a D on a Saturday, but it's unsignalized and that's to be expected. There's no queues, backups, we're showing just a car at a time waiting to come out.
There's no serious queuing there, as a result of the increased volume?
Nope, and the queuing that would have.
Turning movements, no?
Nope. They're, they all.
Actual increase of queuing?
Nope, they all operate just really well.
Even if you model it for July 4th weekend?
We do not model for something like that. We do not, we do not design roadways for a July 4th or a Christmas holiday because, or Black Friday, just because it's, we try to do the average weekday out of the year.
This is all March, I'm just wondering what it's like in July.
Do you look at peak?
Okay.
Yes, and we did, we did, looked at the peak hours and we did reach out to DOT to get a growth factor, which they supplied us, and we reached out to South Central Council of Governments to see if they had anything that they wanted us to adjust it by and they didn't feel the need to adjust it.
There was no analysis of the 30th highest hour of the year?
No. No. They don't, we don't do that anymore.
What was?
Huh?
What was 30th highest hour?
That, that is more of a highway design issue that they look at when you're looking at a major highway, not during the streets, not, not intersection analysis, so.
I don't agree with you.
No, and that's why we don't do it. I mean, all the roadways would be, all the roadways would be very overdesigned. So you can see there's, there's no issues out there. All that we did require and ask the client to do was to ensure that they have stop signs and stop bars at the egresses to the Tractor Supply driveway. And this will go to DOT for an encroachment permit because they are in the right of way. So DOT will review all this as well. And I'll stay for any other questions?
I have a question. Since the owner owns La Quinta, might you ask them about the traffic on that hotel? Like if there's differences from the standard as to when they're seeing busy times, if they're different than from what, you know, your thing showed up there, the average?
We could, but I want to say that the IT has been around for many, many years collecting data. And hotels are one of the ones that they have a lot of data points for. I can look it up when I go back to my seat and tell you how many, but it's, it's one of the ones that they're very familiar with and do a lot of consulting with. And I, I want to say that this is actually going to be an All Suites Hotel, so it's a little different than, I think, a standard hotel that somebody would be coming and staying one night at. This might be somebody staying a week.
Thank you.
Nope, anytime, anytime. Anybody else?
Thank you. Appreciate it. Touch into the details.
Thank you. And I'll turn it over to the, well, Sergio, but landscape architect.
I'm going to bring up Mr. Garrish's plans, which were submitted to you. You should have them in your packets. With the renderings as well. You should, if you have any trouble, let me know. But the renderings are here. Before Mr. Garrish gets on, I just wanted to identify that we did submit to Connecticut DOT, we're not making any of these decisions in a vacuum. They did provide a letter, I don't know if it's part of the record or not, Sam, if, if we submitted it. I thought we had, but I may be remiss in that. But they provided us a letter on January 27th, 2023. They had five comments on our submittal. One was proof of town approval must be submitted prior to the issuance of an encroachment permit, that's why we're here first. Provide peak hour turning movement counts, background generated and combined at Route 2 and site drive intersection, as well as capacity analysis. Mr. Dion will be submitting those on, on his, on our client's behalf to the DOT. And the third one is to install a stop sign at the Route 2 site drive intersection. That's the only traffic control that was requested by the DOT, which was confirmed by our traffic engineer. They also wanted a site detail for a breakaway sign support and then some details on pavement restoration that may, Connecticut DOT specifications. So I thought this had been submitted, but I can provide you a copy of it. And.
Just one question on the DOT's submittal. This wasn't to OSTA, right? This is just for an encroachment permit?
It was reviewed by Gary Brigham and signed by Carlos Wimberly, Special Services Section Manager, Bureau of Highway Operations.
It doesn't trip any OSTA limits. I should have asked the traffic engineer.
I don't believe so.
It's not a major traffic generator.
Mike Dion for the record. No, it's not. It doesn't meet the threshold, so it is the district that's requesting it.
So OSTA is STC, it gets bumped up when it's, how many, 100, 125?
100,000 square feet or 200 parking spaces.
Okay. So, so it doesn't trip that, that upper limit of an OSTA approval?
I apologize, just when he was discussing that, I thought of a question. I'm just curious, with the stop sign, is there any additional lighting that you're going to have for that driveway? You know, so that folks getting up there can be seen or, you know, that intersection is, I don't know what the lighting is.
Probably not, not, that's a state road, we wouldn't be lighting the state road. Typically you want to not have overflow into any other properties with the lights.
Okay. How about just lights, even small light, just to delineate where the driveway is? Does that exist already or no?
I was going to say, I don't think there are, no.
Okay.
Is there any roadway lighting in that area at all? No illumination?
Along.
Street fixtures?
Along Route 2.
Along the roadway?
Along Route 2 or the?
Route 2, I'm sorry.
Route 2.
Route 2, Liberty Street. I believe it's a lit highway. Yeah, to tell you the truth, I don't, don't recall, but.
Utility home market, I believe.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure there's, there's lights along there. We could take a Google Street view.
Okay, so there is some illumination?
Yeah, that's where I was going.
I would presume so, yeah. Trying to remember the last time I drove it at night, but I'm pretty sure it's pretty well lit since it is a state highway.
It, it seems to me that it is lit there.
I'll let Tim go on with his presentation. Will set. And I think if you go to, right here are the, yeah, those are the rendering photos.
Cool. Thanks.
Do you want to put it on the screen for you? Okay. That way, the screen, but, yeah, and if you want to toggle between pages, up and down. And then if you want to get to the other ones, just hit escape.
Good evening, again, this is, my name's Timothy Garrish, landscape architect out of Providence, Rhode Island. I think Sergio and Mike have done a great job introducing the project, especially from a site characteristic point of view. Starting with the street trees, you'll notice at the top along the parkway that they're pulled back about 35 feet from the, from the edge of the curb. So that helps with sight lines, but also primarily because of there's existing wires and utilities going through there. The street trees are a mixture of, of red maple and, and an accent tree right in the front corner here, right there, if you can follow the cursor, which is American Linden. We had a great conversation with the Architecture Review Board and they suggested that. I think it's a great accent. My thoughts in, in theory was when you're driving the parkway heading south, come up the hill, you see this, the tilia, the Linden is going to get to 100 feet, 80 feet or so and it really is going to structure, catch your eye and lead you left to the, the east, excuse me, the west to east alignment of the hotel. So it's a in scale tree planting with, with the hotel building itself. The street tree plantings continue down the Entrance Drive and they vary in scale. Again, there's more red maples, but also a smaller, more understory tree actually, again, pulled away from the edge because of the utilities of, of, off the curb, but it's a hop horn beam, so it's going to get 35 feet tall, much smaller in scale, but it doesn't necessarily will frame and work with the architecture of, of the hotel itself. To the south, we have the 25 and 20 foot residential buffer yard, which is, again, is a mixture of mostly, almost all native, if I'm not mistaken, evergreens, shrubs, trees, small trees, understory trees. Again, red maples leak into there. The species list, as you can see, I broke out the, the buffer yard to the bottom right, if I can move, there we go, up. Maybe I'm moving left, but I'm not, okay. But you, you can see it and I'm sure you have it in front of you. But those species also are cohesive, cohesion, they're planted within the landscape itself around the hotel. So there's a visual cohesion and a native, native species mix. Within the parking lot, the trees are located sensitively with the location of the lamp posts, so we're not blocking light where people are going to park. And again, there's a mixture of native trees, which are red maples, even Nysia, which is planted, which is black tupelo, which is planted closer to the wetlands, hinting at the wetland, you know, location and connection. And then a mixture of even Zelkova, which is a great street tree and doesn't have root issues that expand and pop curbs and, and asphalt and et cetera like that. The front, back to the front, as Sergio mentioned, is all maintained turf. And I think if I can go like this, uh-oh, oh yeah, I can, okay. This is not my computer. And I think if I can go like this, uh oh, oh yeah, I can, okay. This is not my computer. There we go. So that's a view looking from the north, looking towards the south, southeast. You can see the, the, the street trees, but you also see the maintained turf and lack of shrub vegetation. So you get the scale and the magnitude of the hotel, but also a clean, you know, presentation. I think it accents the, the architecture very well. And then, looking back the other direction, again, you can see the maintained turf, the sidewalk, signage easily visible from the road, but also the, the beginnings of the buffer yard, the native plantings with, with artistic license by the renderer that buffer the, the property from the adjacent residential lot to the, to the south. If I go back.
Are those trees scaled? How are those trees scaled? Take us to scale the building?
Uh, they, they, yeah, those are scaled about 10 years out. So they are not, they are not supposed to be finished elevation. So, I mean, finished, finished mature. So going in there, two, two and a half caliper. Right. So they're going to be 15 feet tall probably at most.
What would they have to be to go in the ground with that?
Uh, that's a good question, because that one's looking like probably 30, so I'm going to say probably four inch caliper, which is a good sized tree.
That has a very nice effect.
Yeah, yes. It's 10 years. It's hard. I plant trees and I know I'll never see them at maturity, right? You know, you, you plant a great oak and 100 years from now it's there, but we'll never see it. Somebody else will enjoy it.
Can we extract the caliper, the two and a half degrees?
Back to the PDF. Oh, that one. Sorry. All the way to the right. Good. Thanks, Sergio. Okay. And then the, again, the entrance to, so we have a lot of turf area leading from, from the parkway and then the hatched area to the, to the left in here. And also underneath the buffer yard and all this down to the, down to the south, little buffer planting from the, from the park and ride, which you can see in the winter, and all the exposed disturbed area down below the wall and through here is all a native conservation mixed. So it's not needing to be maintained on a regular basis. It needs to be cut a couple of times a year. But think of it as a, as a meadow mix. There'll be some flowers, but a lot of native species of grasses and et cetera. So out of sight, not, not requiring a lot of maintenance. And then in the, in the front entry here, coming in, we have an, an entry area outside entertainment zone where you can have, you know, activities going on after hours, et cetera, where, you know, barbecue pit or, or, or a, a gas pit, fire pit kind of area. Again, all bordered with native vegetation, mixture of shrubs, small trees, hop hornbeams in the, in the planted bed here where the, where the cursor is. And another hornbeam here in the corner anchoring the southeast corner of the, of the hotel when you come in. Nice springtime color when you enter. Questions?
After you, Chuck.
Could you explain what the retaining walls are on site? Go back to your site sketch.
You've got to push your button.
Highlight where the retaining walls are on site and approximately what the reveal is on the retaining wall?
Sure. Great question. This dark line coming around, my cursor, just.
So in that area, in that area, our fences, I'm sorry, I can normally answer my own questions, but the site plan is so small, I can't read the proposed grades on the, on the downhill side of the retention bed or downhill side of the retaining wall.
Let me, let me, you can. Let me zoom in just a touch.
My question is, is there any sort of barrier that's required in that area to keep someone from stepping off a retaining wall or, or falling off a retaining wall in any of those areas?
Good question. I'll let Sergio answer the, the above the parking lot side. There is a, that dark hatch line that comes through is all riverstone. So it's like a natural buffer that you would not want to necessarily walk.
Okay, so there's something there that someone could detect that, that would cue them to the fact that there's a retaining wall?
Yeah, absolutely, except for the one area down here, which I'll let Sergio.
All right. The other, the other question that maybe you should answer is at the top of the slope to the west side or to the left as you're facing the road from the hotel, the top of that slope, is anything required at the top of that slope to keep someone from stepping off the top of that slope? And what is that slope?
Oh, from the grading in here?
Yes.
Yeah, it's three to one?
Because that's a pretty substantial drop there.
It, it is. It's three to one. It's, it's, it's steep, but another reason why we're doing more of a native conservation mix.
Right, that's a 50% grade, so.
We're not inviting you to go walk there. You can walk to the front. You can be in the grass. You have your entertainment area.
So there's no edge there. There's no planting or anything to cue anybody, because at night, I'm just thinking, if someone wanders out there at night?
Yeah, well, that's, that's why the, the native vegetation, you know, when you're in a meadow area, you're in here with heights. And so you would notice that coming off of maintained turf, for sure.
Is there any lighting out there at all that would?
And also there's this shrub buffer edge to the, to the outside space. So you'd have to cross over shrub edge to get to climb up the hill.
Okay.
If I may, I think your question, Mr. Sheehan, is that at this edge here, there's no defining edge where someone, if it's dark out, it's, it's a safety hazard, they could go tumbling down that slope, correct?
Okay, so there's no sitting areas, no recreational areas, no invite to anybody or sidewalks to get them onto that side of the building at all?
There's the sidewalk that goes to this doorway, but they would have to go through the yard, this, this grass area to get to this slope. Now, I, I don't think if, if the recommendation of, of this, this commission is to, is to put some vegetation there. Is there anything that precludes that, Tim? No. To put some, just to, just as a defining factor to keep people from accessing, because we don't want, it's not the intention for people to walk down here. I believe this is a ground cover, correct? Yes. Yeah.
I'm just thinking of the errant walker that wanders outside because he's been driving all day, somehow gets around that side of the building and takes a tumble off that, that side of the building. If, if there were an edge of some sort there, and there appears to be.
They would, they would run into, I'll have one of those, like yellow, I have more of those moments, Black Eyed Peas. And et cetera. So there'd be masses of vegetation in the, in the three foot high range, two to five, you know, depending on what's going.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be like an edge with turf and then the turf keeps going.
Gotcha. Yeah. Thank you.
And when you're switching the dumpster location, does that tree in that corner get swapped out for where the dumpster?
We're, we're going to have to reevaluate that edge, but it's probably similar to what's there minus some shrub changes and adjustment.
We're actually going to have some additional landscaping area, so we're going to be swapping out the landscape area.
That's, yeah.
So if we could, if, if it, if it's okay with the commission, we can handle that administratively unless you want to see it. But I, I don't think it's a, a big change. I can, let me just bring up the site plan again, just to remind you what that area now looks like. And let's see, this one. So whereas there was a tree here before.
Right.
Now we can landscape this, so I'll have to work with Tim if we can fit a, a tree in that area, given the slope, because that does, there is some grading there.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
And I also just wanted to answer Mr. Sheehan's question. This wall, I mean, this, the, the parking lot, and I was remiss in, in bringing this up in my presentation, but the retaining wall, you can see we have bottom and top of wall here. This is actually retaining the parking area.
I appreciate you blowing it up. I can't read it on the, the half scale drawing.
So on this side, this wall is about four feet at the, at the tallest on this side.
Okay.
As you go to the rear of the property though, and this wall is much taller. You're talking about 11, 10 to 11 feet in, in some areas here.
Now, was there anything on the top of the wall there to keep someone from stepping off it?
No, not, not right now, but we added a note to the plan.
Should there be a fence there to keep someone from?
Well, it talks about fall protection in the plan.
Yeah, we added a note to the plan on basis of some staff comments. I think either the town engineer or, or, or Sam had mentioned, you need fall protection and that's perfectly, that's perfectly acceptable.
So if we stipulated a fence along that line?
Yeah, yeah, there'll be a, there'll be a code complying fence along the top of that wall.
Not chain link, hopefully.
No, no, I, I wouldn't want to impose my architectural abilities on anything, but I, I think something, something that's tasteful, that would provide screening and fall protection.
If you want to preclude chain.
Appropriate to the landscape plan.
If you want to preclude chain link.
Our landscape architect could suggest something.
Yeah.
Something similar to what's.
Of appropriate height and?
Something that's similar in character and style to what's buffering the dumpster area. So there's a tie in.
So while we're on the retaining wall, on the parking side is going to be the fieldstone? And the outside is going to be the concrete block?
I don't believe we've specified any materials for that retaining wall.
It also says designed by others, is that?
Well, that, because I, I don't design that retaining wall structurally yet until we get permits. So the material, the type, it could be a concrete wall, it could be a modular block wall. It's going to depend on what my client decides.
There'll be a shop, a shop draw. It'll probably be precast, right?
Most, most likely it'll be a concrete wall. I would suspect that the areas that can't be seen by, from the public, like on the backside, we wouldn't do anything really decorative, but areas that could be seen. But keep in mind, this wall is, is going to be seen from the, it'll be, it'll be seen from the adjacent properties, which is going to be screened with, with buffer plantings. So I would presume that we'd want to do something attractive facing our neighbors, but facing the, the state hi, the, the state parking lot and facing the Pawtucket River, I, I don't think we're going to do something overly direct decorative.
But on the east side, on the parking lot, is the wall like, no, on the, well, on the Pawtucket Riverside?
Pawtucket Riverside, yep, on the east side, yep.
Furthest east. I'm assuming the wall's going to be from grade of the parking lot up several feet?
It's retaining the parking lot.
Oh, so, okay, so your fence will be right there, not?
Right. The fence will be keeping people from.
It's set back from the, too. It looks like it's set back from the edge of curb, so that it's not right on the edge of the edge of road, which I would like to see.
We usually have a small gap. You need a snow shelf and, and a planting area.
So that's where the fence would be?
The fence, I, I believe would be mounted on top of the wall.
On the wall, right.
It could go in front of it.
What I'm saying, there's not a wall like this from the parking lot to here and then the retaining drop down 12 feet.
I'm not sure I understand your, forgive me.
Well, the parking lot's here. There's no retaining, the wall doesn't come up higher than the parking lot.
Does it come up high enough? Usually we, we extend the wall up another foot. We don't put it flush with grade. I think that's what you're asking.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, we usually have that wall at least a, a foot or so up from grade and then from there the fence would be on it.
Would you agree to that as a condition?
Yes, yeah. We could do that.
Yeah, I, I think that's a, in, in view of the, the reveal on, on the downhill side of that wall, you know, some reveal on it above grade, I think would be of value, even though that adds a little cost.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, I don't think that would be an, an issue, just the, just, just enough to bring it up above grade.
Do you think that it would make sense to put wheel stops in there to, to, I know they're a pain with snow removal, but you're going to get an overhang of about two foot six if you allow the vehicle to pull in all the way and you're not going to have much of a snow shelf? Do you think wheel stops should go in that area as well?
I could consult with my client and I, I can, I, we can consider.
Possibly consider it.
Yeah, yes, absolutely. I don't want to answer for him, but I'd, I'd like to talk to him first and see if that would be, if he'd be amenable. But it's not a bad thing to keep the cars also from punching their nose into the wall or into the fence. It's just another.
Needs of stopping people in advance of an 11-foot drop without requiring a, a barrier. You know, the option would be if, if you didn't like wheel stops, maybe some sort of a barrier rail in, in that vicinity to protect someone from an 11-foot drop.
Well, considering how many people have driven into the Pawtucket River in recent years, you need to save people from themselves, one of them being in Stonington.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other questions for myself or Tim? I'm going to bring up our, our architect now, if that's okay.
Just a quick question on that basin again.
Yep.
Does the, does the addition of the additional area, and I realize it was permitted before and permitted by others, does that trip a, a general permit now for discharge? Does the drainage area become large enough where a general permit is required?
General stormwater permit for Department Environmental and Energy Protection is at five acres. I don't believe we're, we're close to that. I'd have to check the, the acreage of.
You may want to, you may want to check it because this may put it over.
Yeah, because we're not disturbing that portion, I, I don't know, but I'll look into that because if we do need a state permit that we're.
They might require that, that owner then, it may help you because they're going to require best management practices permit, which is going to address the issue that you have long term with these guys not wanting to do that.
Yeah, let me, I'll, I'll check into that, but regardless of what this.
I think it's very close. From my scaling of it on the GIS plan, it's very close.
Okay.
I don't think it trips it now. I know it doesn't trip it now. I think you're right on the fringe.
Gotcha. Well, we'll make sure to look into that. Thank you for that comment. So we'll bring up Richard Jones. As I said, Jake, he'll be going over the building plans. You'd like to see the rendering?
Yeah.
Then you can toggle to the PDF if you like.
Good evening. My name's Richard Jones. Jones and Jones Associates Architects, 6120 Peters Creek Road, Roanoke, Virginia. We've been working on this project with the owner for about two and a half years now. As you can see, it is, we lost it there. It is, we are using the Extended Stay America prototype and this is their premier model that we're using. It's their, their top of the line, so to speak, there. The colors that you see on the base of the building are their standard colors, with the exception of, in this market, we've added some dry stack stone on the vertical sides going up and down at the, the, the front entryway here. And my pointer, there it is. This is going all dry stack stone in there. And then we also have some panels of brick here. And then on the lower side of this facility, from what you see going down the road, it appears that we have a four-story building. As you go down the, the hill where you can see the car off to the left, you go down, we are actually exposed for five stories down on the parking lot side and we have some brick accents on that side also. In working with your staff, we got comments back from the Architectural Review Board about the lighting. And how do I go to the other? Is that Sergio?
Want to give you the other rendering?
Other rendering, yeah. What you're seeing here, there are some light fixtures that have been eliminated. There are, there are no light fixtures up on the high side of the building. This is the side that actually faces the residential house that's there now. Those, those lights have been eliminated.
So it's the south side?
Yes. The lights that we have on the rest of the building are also all downlights. There, there's nothing that's projecting up on any of these light fixtures. It meets the, the dark sky principles that are set forth.
Do you happen to have a night scape rendition?
None of these, maybe we can produce that and get it for you, but I don't have it in this presentation. And you can see we have worked with the landscape architect very closely to try to get plants that work well with our building design. Granted, this is, like Tim said, 10 years out, but that's what we're doing. Sergio mentioned it from the very beginning. This site was very difficult from getting our utilities and particularly our wastewater out of the building. We originally were setting this building down similar to the way Tractor Supply did, but we just could not get that, that flow by gravity and having an 80-room facility that didn't flow by gravity was not a good idea. Right now, the only thing we have, we have two public restrooms and a laundry area that's on that ground level, entry level, that can easily be pumped, such as a small magnitude there. This is a facility that the Extended Stay America corporate division has really been trying to get something in this area for quite a few years and they are excited about this coming and they've actually started listing it now on their future projects when people come out. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have and I'm sure that the rest of the group team is here to answer questions.
Questions? Gary? Okay. Oh, and so the canopy lighting, is that what it was called? That was on the brow, on the top?
Yes.
That's eliminated on the south side, but it still continues on the other sides?
That is correct.
But on the other side, it's low.
Correct, yes. We have these can lights that are on the side of the building. In the prototype building, the light shines up and down. And on the side next to the resident, we've totally taken them out. And on the one, on the other side, we've got them down lower.
And we assume the light, the signs on the building are illuminated at night?
They are, but what is shown in this rendering will not be permitted by your zoning ordinance. We will have to submit that as a separate permit request. What we've shown here is the maximum that Extended Stay America likes to have. But in this case, that won't be. We will have this monument sign down low and this one sign up top.
Just one? Okay. I was wondering.
That, again, we have to get to the exact sizes that are allowed. Again, we have to get to the exact sizes that are allowed
Yep.
By your ordinance, by the length of property that we have in the front.
Right.
And that could tweak up or down based on that.
Great, thank you.
We do have additional signage all the way around, right at the entrance to the building, but it's directional signage, so everybody knows this is the entry door to come in.
Right.
And it is not visible from the street at all.
Okay, thank you.
That is all I have for presenters on our project team. We really appreciate your attention this evening and indulging this application and your thoughtful comments. My client, Mukesh Patel, is here. If there's any questions about operations or something that we can't, couldn't answer for you, but if there's any additional questions, or we'll wait to, to the pleasure of the commissioner, we'll wait to hear from the public as well.
I have one, I have one question. I'm just curious if, I know obviously you've been in contact with the Tractor Supply folks on a number of issues, how about the other neighbor, the residential house? Have you been in contact with them? Are they aware of the plans? Were there any concerns that they had?
Yes, we have been, and I believe they're here this evening.
Okay.
We've had conversations with them regarding the direct abutting property line between the two. I'll let them speak if they so choose, but the property was purchased by my client from the family that owns the property that remains.
Okay.
So we have been, they had to go through a closing to purchase the property, and since then, we have been in touch to discuss things, and we're happy to listen and discuss, and although we don't want to do, if there's anything that we need to discuss, we necessarily want to take up your time with it, if it's something that we need to work out, but we're open to that, those discussions to make sure that we are a good neighbor and buffer them appropriately.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so let's hear from the public. Dennis Maynard?
We can just come up together if that's fine.
Sure, just please state your names and address.
My name is Dennis Maynard, and this is Terry Caradillo. We are the adjacent landowner, and we currently live at 311 Liberty Street. Evidently, the project's been going on for a few years, and, you know, we've never talked to anybody about it, so we really have just kind of come into the plans, and Sergio met with us last night. That's the first, that's the first conversations we've had with anybody as far as this project goes. But we do have a great deal of concern, you know, to our quality of life and our living next door, as the family has been living at this location for about 60 years. So we have concerns with, I'm just going to give you a quick list, and I guess we'll do a hit list, and I'll go through each of them. Light management, noise management, the traffic is a great concern of ours, because we can barely turn out of the, of the house now, especially during the summer peak, which runs for about five to six months, which, that wasn't really concerned, that wasn't really considered tonight, but it's July 4th, about six months of the year. I have some issues with the water runoff, and another thing that we talked briefly about last night with Sergio is I don't think that the property line is properly shown on the drawings that they've submitted. So there is, there are a few issues that need to be resolved, but we'd like to speak our piece on the issues that I spoke to you about here previously. The first thing I'd like to do is start with noise. We know that it's going to be a great deal of construction moving forward. Literally, our house is going to be somewhere in the range of about 70 feet from the side of the hotel. We've got a very shallow buffer, you know, in this side of town, the 25-foot residential buffer, plus the additional buffer with the height of the building, and then we are about 20 feet to the south of that. So we're going to be very closely related to this building, and as it shows on the site plan, there are some plantings, there are going to be some trees planted, but there is no protection for our house, for our living arrangements. We're going to be directly impacted by the facade, the people, the traffic at this, of everybody at the hotel. So we're going to have the parking lot directly behind our rear boundary. There's no visual separation between us there, there's no visual separation between us on our, our northern boundary. It's a big concern of ours, because now we are going to be impacted by everything at the hotel. And as I saw tonight, there is going to be an outdoor activity area, which is going to be directly adjacent to our backyard, where they've got it located at the back of the hotel. So that's, as far as living arrangements, that's a very big concern of ours. The next thing I'd like to talk about is the, is the grading and the water runoff. I know they've done a lot of work, you know, going around and collecting water, but I look at the, at the grades directly adjacent to our property, and it looks like they've got the flat area up against the building, and then it's going to come down at quite a steep angle, and then it's going to kind of feed down towards our property, which currently it does, but in a much lesser degree of downgrade. What I'm worried about is getting flooded in our backyard, possibly by a large storm. And then what's going to happen is, we've got the, to the back of the property, you've got the retaining wall that is supporting the parking structure, and that's going to be a hard boundary, which doesn't allow any water to pass. You know, there is no swales or anything in our side yard to try to get that water, to get it down past our yard, to get it in the back, to run it out into the drainage area. So that's one thing that we're worried about as well. They talked a little bit about the lighting, they're only going to have the lighting down at the lower level, but I mean, it's going to be a direct impact as there is, there is no buffer between us. There is nothing blocking direct access from the hotel to our house. I was looking at the drainage and runoff, the water protection and groundwater protection plan. I believe, you know, I had, I did have the hydrodynamic separator was something that I didn't see on the plan, and I'm kind of happy to hear that that's going in, because it will collect a lot of, a lot of the waste that's coming, the oils and whatever comes off the parking lot. But I do have concerns about the retention facility that is there, because we do know that there has been no maintenance on that structure for a number of years, and is it actually capable of handling it? Now Sergio stated that they are readdressing that, and I personally doubt that it's probably filled with silt, and it probably is going to need a good overhaul and cleaning to take the capacity, because now you've got this great area of pavement, both between Tractor Supply, the garage, the hotel, or the parking facility, and the water that does come down the driveway at Tractor Supply, that, that water just, especially during a heavier storm, it just flows down there, it goes right past the basin, it goes right down in, and you know, who knows what's in that water? But I believe, and I didn't hear, 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 this is a Westerly Water Wellhead Protection Area. Now, has the Westerly DEM or the Environmental Management been notified of this? I believe this is a Westerly Wellhead Watershed. Has anybody talked to them or made them available? Have they bought off on this? And, you know, I just have some concerns that, you know, not everything has been covered yet in that, the water protection. I just don't want there to be any problems. We're going to have enough problems as it is, living there. And let's go to the traffic next. The traffic coming out of our driveway, especially turning left at all times of the year, is awful. I mean, you could barely get out of, we've got to wait 10 minutes at times, and we all know, anybody that's gone to Tractor Supply knows the truth, knows what actually happens there. There have been some accidents there, people, it's a speedway out there, people come by our house 80, 90 miles an hour all the time. There's no enforcement out there, no targeted enforcement. So we're looking at an additional, we've got an 80-room hotel where, they showed the study that their high and low moments of traffic during a day being 34 and 21. You've got 80 rooms, Extended Stay, there could be multiple cars in each of these rooms, so I don't really buy into that myself. I'm, common sense. I worked in the highway industry, I worked as a, an engineer, a consultant for several years for DOT, so I got a little bit of, I know a little bit about it. But I find it really hard to believe that DOT, the Connecticut DOT, has written off on this, and I don't think that sufficiently, I mean, historical studies, this road is its own entity, this is not a, a road, and anybody that travels it, it's the highest-traveled road in our, in our town, by far. It outdoes Route 27, I don't care how many people go to Mystic. It's a four-lane highway, and it's a highway. People come through there routinely, you know, average 60 miles an hour through there. So I don't see anything but more problems coming as a result of the traffic. I see a higher risk for accident, I see a higher risk for us just exiting our property. Now, we're the only property owner that abuts that's here, there's nobody else that's, but we are the direct neighbor. I don't see anybody that I recognize here, so, you know, we've got kids that live across the street, we are a residential neighborhood. There's four houses, there's five, six houses across the street from us with the Carpath Center. So I really see that as a great issue for us, safety issue. I mean, we get, we just about get hit every day. It's, that's not even, that's, that's no joke, you know, when somebody's coming 60 miles an hour down the road at you. So I'm not sure that not having a light at the intersection there is not a, a good idea, and I'd like to make sure that this, this option has been looked at, or has been analyzed a little more closely, other than writing it off as there not being a light at the intersection. I see it as a great safety issue for those of us residents that live in the area. So we did have an issue with, which, it didn't seem to be represented on the, on the plans that Sergio presented to us, because I don't think he either had the sufficient information or was able to find it in the town, but the adjacent property line is shown incorrectly. There's an additional amount of land at the time that the, that the property was purchased that the main family withheld from the purchase to give us an additional buffer. That property was later transferred to us to add to our property. Now, it's an approximate eight feet just at the driveway going down, and there's an additional area in the back that goes down. Now, this deed is in the, it's in the town hall, and it's shown in the GIS plan, but they don't show it in their plans, so it is a little different from as they have shown to you currently.
Yeah, you, if I may ask you a question?
Yes.
Your north driveway, you have two driveways, I guess?
We do.
So there's a, one plan I have is a yellow dotted line that looks maybe a car, yeah, 12 feet from your driveway, is that about right, or is that not right?
It should be probably, I don't know if Sergio has, Sergio, did you?
Well, he can, he'll have a rebuttal.
Okay. Oh, I don't know if they were able to get that information and incorporate it in the plans, but the plans we got last evening did not have that incorporated into them yet.
Okay.
So they may have found that information today, but there was another buffer protection area.
How far do you think your border is from your driveway edge?
I believe it's around eight feet.
Oh, eight, okay.
And then it continues down the length, it continues down the length
Right.
Of our, of our northern border, and we have an additional footage down in the back
Right.
As well, so, but I don't think that, at least the plan we got last night didn't properly
Okay, we can
Show that, well, we mentioned that to Sergio last night, and, you know, and I don't think he was aware of that either, you know, he didn't get it in his
We'll review that with him.
All right. Just like to look over my notes here real quick.
Sure.
I'm just looking, so I wasn't, I wasn't really clear on it last night, but I do see that, so there's going to be a great deal of fill coming into the backyard for the, for the, for the parking lot. So basically, it looks like there's going to be, you know, 10, 11 feet of fill to come in at the rear of the parking area, and the front will be filled, you know, three, four, five feet. So there's going to be a great deal of, there's going to be a great deal of dust and different things. So what I'm really worried about as well is, you know, if construction moves forward soon, you know, we're going to get a great deal of mud runoff, dust runoff, and I just want to make sure proper, everything properly is taken care of, whether it's watering to keep the dust down, because we're just going to be in a dust storm out there. I mean, that's later down the road, but, and I think that just kind of takes care of, you know, in my short look at the plans, there's just some of our concerns that we have, and it's going to be, you know, there's going to be people, noise, I mean, I'm worried about people wandering onto our property, you know, is there going to be some kind of separate, you know, kind of keep people away from, because we're in such close proximity to them. I mean, I think a fence along, like they talked about, along the, the retain, the retaining wall is a great idea, but, you know, there's nothing between our, we have a fence up on our, on our northern border, a five-foot chain-link fence that runs down, but that's really the only break there is between us, and that will be there between us and the hotel. I mean, it's going to take at least 10, 15, 20 years for the trees to grow up, and they're sparsely spaced, so there's not really, you know, as far as we're concerned, there's not really anything that's going to help us in the near future in our, our living arrangements there next door, so I'm going to leave it at that myself. Now, Terry's got.
I, I have to say, my concerns, major, again, traffic concerns, when you come out of our house in the summer, you have to take a right to go left, because you cannot get across the four lanes without endangering yourself. When I come home, I work at the casino, I come home, I have to sit and wait to try to get into my driveway. I am constantly looking in my rearview mirror because people are flying. The speed limit on that road, you can say it's 45, it is outrageous. We've addressed it with Stonington to try to get more patrols over there to keep an eye on it, just not seeing it. I mean, people come off of 78 and they're gunning it. They just step on it once they get off that, and you can't, the people that don't know, I've lived there my entire life, I know what the road is, so I know how to handle it. People coming out of that parking lot are not going to know that people are coming off of 78, hitting 70, 80 miles an hour before they get to that. They're going to judge where they are, those people are going to be on them. I was out front two months ago, I hear I was out front, two months ago, I hear a crash, guy was turning into tractor, someone flew up the hill, whether they were texting, whatever they were doing. We all know, nowadays, the driving is terrible. There's accidents everywhere, people aren't paying attention, came up, ran right into the back of them. I know to watch, I'll take off, and continue down Route 2, so I don't get run into. Same thing with coming into my driveway. They come off of 78, they're flying, I put my blinker on, way ahead, and brake, to let them know, because I know what happens. Many times, I still have to go past the driveway, because they're coming right up on us. To think, a stop sign, at the end, is going to be sufficient to get people out, we see it, on the weekends, the number of people waiting to get out of that parking lot. And then, as you know, people get frustrated, and they go out, and take off when they shouldn't. And it causes problems. I, I mean, it's not, it's just a safety issue, and I can see that being a big problem. We do have some land, along the side, where we have our trees, and something, and I just want to make sure, we're going to be able to keep that buffer, that nothing is touched there. That's what, one of the main concerns, is what we have for our land, so they're not cutting down any of our trees. In the back, we have a sycamore tree, back there as well, I'm not sure where that falls. I just have, you know, we want to be able to have somewhat privacy, right now. My biggest thing was, yeah, my house is in a tough spot, I'm on Route 2, but I have my backyard. Beautiful scene, I see all over Westerly, beautiful in the back, have a nice fire pit back there, where we can sit out. Now, that's going to be pretty much gone, we're going to have lights, in there with a parking lot, we're going to have a little area where the people are going to be partying, you know they're going to be drinking, extended stay, they're going to be there for a while, they're going to be partying, they're going to have people there, it's just going to be tough on us, and our way of life, at this point. You know, granted, it's, it's zoned for that, there was no talk, like we said, last night was the first night we were approached, which, you know, I, I kind of have to chuckle, when I sit back there, and they've been working on it for two and a half years, and Mr. Patel has never approached me, never said a word to me about anything, we had no information on it. Just kind of surprising, when we saw the plans, and that it was going to be moving forward, trying to get this passed tonight, which, I don't think was really fair to us, to throw it on us, the day before, we didn't have a lot of time to prepare, look at everything, just like with the boundary lines. So, I just have to voice my concerns, with that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
For the record, my name is Carleen Donarumo, a lifelong resident of Pawtucket, and I live at 22 Oakwood Avenue. I'm happy to see that there is some movement with activity, that will be proposed for Route 2, so, in order to add to our tax base. And I'm also thankful to the interim town planner, for his extensive report, and it's much appreciated by us followers of zoning, who have been here constantly, for years, following zoning in the town of Stonington, not only me, but other people. How, and I, when I saw what was online, in the report, I had a concern, I was going to talk to you about. And that had to be about the, what the water pollution control had to say. And it seems like, the water is going to be gravity-fed to Route 2, so, that's kind of been resolved. So, that concern has kind of gone away, but there has a, been a much bigger concern, arising tonight, with this application. And that is, that is so much brand-new information has been added, and not exactly on the plans. Years ago, and I've been following zoning in this town for 40 years, and this became a problem, and somehow, we made it go away, but all of a sudden, it is resurfacing. And I'm a little disappointed, in Mr. Shirensia, and this application. In my opinion, this application, well, before I do that, they talked about a 10-foot and 11-foot-high walls. Don't we have some regulations in our, on the books, about walls? Was there anything in their plans? I, I didn't have a chance, other than to see tonight. They have to come back, don't they, about the walls, 10 and 11 feet high? Yeah. So, anyway, I feel that this application, tonight, is incomplete, and should not be approved. Give them time to go back, and get it right, and give you all the proper information. And unfortunately, Mr. Alexander, who's been following this thing, and writing the report, and analyzing it, isn't going to be here. So now, we're going to have a new planner, looking at it. This is a very complicated situation, and I think it's very unfair, to the neighbors, and to the public, who is concerned about Route 2 development, to approve this thing tonight. Give them an opportunity, to bring it back, when everything is in order, and our new planner can reanalyze it, and re, re-figure whether or not it is a complete application. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Colleen.
You're welcome.
Sergio, would you like to have a? Oh, I'm, you didn't, would you like to sign up, Ben?
Yeah. I wasn't, wasn't planning on speaking, but I, I really, I just wanted to reiterate what Carleen said. This town, and this commission, has worked for, God, as long as I've been following zoning in this town, to develop Route 2, and to develop the zoning regulations for the HI-60. And it's taken, you know, the, the regulations were written over 15, over 20 years ago now, almost, between 15, 20 years, anyway. And it's taken that long, to get this kind of development going. Let's get it right. You know, we waited this long, get it right, get a complete application, and work out the details, before it's, before it's presented. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to speak? Sergio, would you like to have a rebuttal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The last thing I want to do, is disappoint Carleen, and Mr. Tamski, believe me. I tend to disagree, this was a complete application. The information I presented this evening, was in response to staff comment. I was working with the fire department, and I wasn't able to submit my plans, in a timely manner, because I was awaiting response, awaiting comments. So, I don't think the process is broken, I don't think we did anything malicious, I was working within the process, I do want to make that point. I've been in constant contact with Mr. Alexander. I call Byron Stillman, on a regular basis, to make sure that his needs, and those of Mr. Burns, and of Chief Burns, were accommodated. Those were the only changes to the plan, that were material, was that extra entrance. I can go back to the plans that were submitted, I don't know what Carleen was referring to, but she cited one thing, which was the walls. The walls have always been that height. I, I don't know, that's not new information, that was provided in the packages. If it wasn't, please point it out to me, and I'd be happy to address it. But, I don't think that, I don't think it's fair to characterize this, this application as incomplete. I've been working through the process, with your staff. So, I just wanted to open with that. If there's anything I need to address, on that front, I'd be happy to do so, if any of the commissioners have any comment.
It has taken me a while to figure out, TOW versus BOW, top of wall, and bottom of wall, and I did need a magnifying glass, to be honest.
I'd be happy to provide full-size plans, to the entire commission, but I've been advised to provide the smaller ones.
I know, it's, it's tough, when you get a big site like this, to have it on 17 by 11, it's tough.
I want to make your jobs easier, believe me. And whatever I need to do, that to accommodate that, please let me know, on future applications, I'm happy to accommodate whatever you need. We also send things electronically, but I know, not everyone likes to look at things on a computer, and zoom in and out. So, with that, was there any other, I can, I can address the neighboring comments, if you'd like. They are not unfounded, in their, their concerns, I'm not going to debate that, they are in a precarious situation. They're a residential property, in HI-60 zone, and sold off the rest of their property, to Mr. Patel, who they knew, was a hotel, was in the hospitality industry. I don't understand how you can come up here and say, "I can't believe this is coming," when you knew, this was coming. So, besides that, we did offer to meet with them, because we had a discrepancy, with their driveway, which we have since resolved. I have the driveway located, and I can show you where that is. I was on the phone with Terry's father, Keith, as recent as this afternoon, I don't know if she knew that, who provided me the deed, to the property, which, which could, that, which was conveyed to Terry. And I can tell you, that we have, we looked into it, all day today, and made sure, that our survey was sound. So, I'm going to bring up the revised plans. This is the area of concern, this asphalt driveway, right here. This is the property line, which they claim that they own seven more feet, seven to eight more feet, in this direction. You can see this little jog, in the, in the, in the, in the frontage here?
Little dog leg?
Correct. They showed me an assessor, or Mr. Main showed me an assessor's map, Terry's father, that pretty much brought the property line to that location. I have identified that that is, that is an error, in the, in the assessor's maps, plus, the assessor's maps, and the GIS maps, have a big disclaimer, that says, "They are not to be used for survey, and for, for that type of information." I can tell you, that this survey is accurate, it's an A2, it was, it was verified by my survey manager, we went back and double-checked it, and I have the deeds with me, right now, that show, when the conveyance happened. They are correct, that this piece of land, that they own, was enlarged, and there was portions of Mr. Patel's land, that he now owns, conveyed to this property, to make it larger, back in 2018. That was done, prior to my client, buying the property. His deed reflects this, and their deed reflects this, and I can show that. Now, in an act of good faith, I am happy, and I've talked to my client, that if there is any error, we will grant them an easement, over that area, because they have been maintaining it, as yard. So, I just haven't had a chance to speak to them about this, and I didn't want to do it in a public forum, but it was brought up. But, yes, we can work out, whatever discrepancy is, but I have an A2 survey, and I have a survey, that was recorded on the land development records, which is reflective of my plan. So, this may be new information to them, so I don't want to, you know, I don't need to prolong this, but we are, we are willing to work with them, on this.
Are there plantings, between the edge of their northern, boundary of their northern driveway, and your?
The lands, yes, the landscape plans reflected that.
No, but I mean, their, their plantings, on their side, that they, their buffer.
Well, we can't, we can't cut down trees on their property.
Right.
That's not allowed. We can trim everything up to the property line. But, I would hope to keep, as much of that existing buffer as possible, but I need to work with my landscape architect, to do so. So, yes, that is something we can entertain, I just don't have the information with me, right now, as to how much of that we can save, and then embellish upon.
Incorporate in, or not?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
So, yes, we'd be willing to do that, those conversations are going to be had.
They also mentioned, uh...
Use your button.
I'm sorry, they also mentioned, uh... The, uh, lack of a swale, along that property line, between them, on that driveway side.
Yep.
Is it possible to, to swale that property line, to direct the drainage, along the property line, so that it doesn't go on to their property? Collect it in a swale, along that property line?
Well, a small portion of it, most of it's going to get collected, on, by our, by our drainage system. But, yes, the small portion, that's, that, that goes over the property line, actually is going to come back, onto our property.
Right, it looks easy, it looks like an easy thing to do.
And then, it will pretty much swale, I mean, this is all going to be landscaped in here. It'll swale back across, and around the wall, and down into the stream.
Right, just to keep it on your property, to, so that, so that comment, where we're directing runoff, over the property line, it looks like it, it would be fairly easy to swale it, along that property line, so that you would collect it, put it into the drainage system, and send it to the detention base.
Um, yes, I, I don't think that will be an issue, but I will add, all of their stormwater runoff, is going to be coming on to our property, which will be swelled across.
It could be, it could be, that you're reducing the amount of runoff, because you're collecting so much of it on-site.
But, that is something we can accommodate, yes.
That should be looked at, and it should be quantified.
That's a great comment, thank you.
And we've also mandated some dust mitigation, on other construction projects. This is going on in the middle of August, when it's bone-dry. Is there some way?
Just got a call today, about that, same problem, in North Stonington.
Is there a way we can write that in, to stipulation?
Best, best management practices, during earthwork?
Yes, we can include that, in our sediment erosion control plan, during construction. We can add in a caveat, that, you know, watering of the, dust, dust control.
Dust control.
Dust control. Usually, it's done by a water truck, but, yes.
Calcium chloride.
That's, whatever, whatever you advise, or the town engineer advises, we'd be happy to accommodate. Yes, that's something that we can do during construction. And that, that's a very real thing, we've dealt with it in the past. As you know, I've experienced with running quarries, and construction jobs, it's a very real thing, that people, when they have dust, and silica dust particularly, we went through a whole thing on that, and water is the answer, and, and, as Mr. Sheehan has put it, the sodium chloride.
Okay.
Um, so, the, the water runoff, we're happy to make sure that we don't cause any issues for neighboring property. The noise during construction, construction, it's, it's inherent, that it's going to be noisy, for a period of time, when the construction going on. There's noise ordinances, in your town, that, that identify what the hours of operation that construction can take place. Beyond that, I don't think there's anything special that we can, in, in, special treatment or enforcement, that we can do, besides what the town enforces, and we're happy to accommodate The, let's see, just want to go though, we covered the stormwater, the property line, the noise, the lighting, we have a photometric plan, that identifies that there will be zero-foot candles, at the property line. Besides that, I mean, that's the prerequisite, required that the town, we provide to the town, so, and we've gone on, insofar as to accommodate the recommendation, that we don't have any lights up really high, that could cause any issues. So, I think we've mitigated that, to the best of our ability. Think those were the, the main things. Town of Westerly, if they've been notified, I'm sorry. They were notified, I believe, as part of the process, through comment response, I believe in your memo, Sam, that they were provided the information, with, and they hadn't commented. I might have to go into your memo, here, for a moment.
They hadn't commented, I, I think the, the public comment, was relating to public drinking water sources, however, I, and Sergio, you might know about this, but, maybe this is news for the commission. In Connecticut, the Department of Public Health requires that public drinking water companies be notified of land development applications. But, I'm not sure that would apply, to Westerly Water Company, and I had pulled up the map, right after that public comment, that would inform a developer, when they should be notifying someone, and I don't see their, you know, their aquifer, or their wellhead area, as, as triggering, any sort of special notice requirement. or their wellhead area as, as triggering any sort of special notice requirement. But Westerly Water was notified by the town, yes.
I thought they may have also been notified through the abutter list, through the abutting property process. But I can't be for sure, I'd have to look at the, the abutters list, which I can, I can take a look at. But it does say in your report, Westerly Water Company and Town of Westerly were notified. Yeah, I, I won't argue that there's gonna be fill broad on the property. That's, that's, that's going to happen, but that's part of a construction project. And I believe there, there is also a stipulation that the erosion sediment control needs to be bonded. So you have that fail-safe, that if something is not taken care of properly, you have, you can pull that bond. As far as a fence, I think we could, we could consider that as well in, in working with the neighbors to, to make sure that they're properly screened because I know the vegetation won't grow up for a while. I can talk to my client about putting a fence in. And I think that was, that was it. Were there any other things that I may have missed or any other concerns you have? My traffic engineer can speak to the traffic concerns. I know that was a big thing. So if, if you would like, he can, he can address those, those items.
Sure.
Good evening again. For the record, Mike Dion with BL Companies. I did hear a couple of things in there that I, I could address. I heard the neighbors mentioned possibly a traffic signal at the, at the intersection. Typically, the federal highway government has traffic signal warrants that they look at for the installation of a traffic signal. Connecticut DOT really only looks at, when they're installing on their roads, what they call the eight-hour warrant, which would have to be that you would have to have 120 cars exiting that driveway for a total of eight hours during the day. So this is not gonna meet that warrant. A hotel is a very low traffic generator, so you're not gonna get to that threshold to meet a signal. You know, as, as I said, like a, the hotel is expected to generate about 60 trips on a Saturday peak hour. That's coming in, going. There's, you know, 25 coming, 32 going, I think. Now, if you compare that to, say, like a Starbucks, where you would have 200 trips coming in out of there for just a small 2,400 square foot building. So again, looking at the relative trip generation, it's, it's definitely one of the lower generating numbers. So it's not gonna meet signal warrants. We did look at the, the safety, so we did look at the crashes up and down the road, up and down Liberty Street there for, from the intersections to intersection. In the last three years, there were no crashes at the tractor supply driveway itself. To the south, there were, I wanna say there were four sideswipe crashes, which are people changing lanes, crashing into somebody else. And to the north, there were rear-end accidents, which are people coming up to the light, stopping and getting hit, so. There's not a big safety concern out there right now as long as you meet the sightlines and everybody can see each other. It should be safe to come in and out. I know they mentioned speed. We did lay out automatic traffic recorder tubes, which capture the speed data. There are some outliers that are going 60 miles an hour, 70 miles an hour, but the 85th percentile, which is the, that 85% of the traffic and below is traveling at, was 45 miles an hour. So it's, they are, there are outliers, but for the most part, people are traveling the speed limit. And I wanna say that the traffic signals on either end do meet or that. I don't know if there was anything else I missed or if anybody has any other questions.
No, I just, I'm glad you brought up the warrants. And, and I just wanna make it clear that this commission can't, because of, of a situation that's described on an intermittent basis, stipulate and have the State Traffic Commission not overrule to put a traffic signal in. We have no jurisdiction over traffic signals. No one in this town does. The OSTA, Office of State Highway Safety does. And you've approached it, you've seen if it meets the traffic warrants. They will simply not let you put a traffic signal in if it doesn't meet the published warrants. And in fact, they'll oppose it.
Yeah, that, that's correct. The new OSTA head will definitely follow the rules to the last.
I have a recent situation up at Bradley where we did have something. There was a major traffic generator that met the warrants and DOT opposed the traffic signal. It met the warrants and they fought us on a traffic signal. So even when you meet the warrants, you don't necessarily get a traffic signal. We eventually got it with political support.
You have to fight for it, and if the governor gets your back and tells them to do what they do.
That's exactly right. So it's not that, that we don't recognize that there are situations out there, nor sympathize with your traffic woes. But unless it meets the traffic warrants and it's agreed to by the Office of State Highway Safety, they're not gonna agree to a traffic signal. And the type of analysis that's been done is the type of analysis that's required and that they review. So we're all sort of hell captive by that process.
Yeah, and they, and they will review it, so.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I just wanna bring the attention to the, to the commission that we submitted on April 28th, 2023, the certified mail receipts from all the abutter notices, including in the abutter notifications, besides the people that were notified in Stonington, that were within the 200-foot, I believe, abutter property owned. The Town of Westerly, attention, Mary LeBlanc, town clerk, was notified. And the Town of Westerly Water Department at 68 White Rock Road was also notified. So Westerly knew about this.
Thank you. Sam, would you like to have a little break before we get into your...
If you bear with me, I can pull it up.
I guess I was gonna propose a five-minute break and then come back to your report.
I don't need it, but I'm happy to if the commission wants a five-minute break, but I'm fine.
What's the...
I just wanted to add one thing. I know he had mentioned about me selling the land. I had purchased my home that I'm living in now in 1993. I did not sell any land to Mr. Patel. That was aunts, uncles, family members. That was not my land to sell, just so I clarify that. When it was stated that I knew what was going in, I was selling the land, just so it's on the record. I didn't sell the land to Mr. Patel.
I see.
Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody's ready for Sam's report? Okay. I'll stretch my legs behind the table.
I'll do my best not to bring up too much that wasn't already brought up today. As the applicant's engineer stated, this is in the HI-60 zone. It's largely surrounded by other land in the HI-60 zone on that side of Route 2. But across the street, you have properties that are zoned in GB-130. You have properties to the south, zoned in the GB-130. Properties to the west in the RA-20. Hotel, as presented, it complies with any bulk regulations for the HI-60. As the presentation noted, they're achieving a height of almost 50 feet. It's worth noting that they're able to do that by increasing the, the front and side yard setbacks over what is, over the minimum provided. The commission should be aware that this is a special use permit, so you have standards and powers governing your granting of special use permits contained in Section 6 of the zoning regulations. So special use permits, they're generally granted if a project adequately addresses public health and safety, there are no issues with traffic, drinking water supplies, sanitary facilities, and et cetera. The commission does have the power to approve, deny, or modify any proposals set forth with special stipulations, including special screening and landscaping, additional buffer requirements, conditions pertaining to design of buildings, time of an operation and intensity of uses on a site, and special design features to minimize adverse impacts on the area environment and traffic. The applicants requested a number of waivers, which should be acted on if the commission acts on this application, including archaeological study, soils report, scaled 3D model or graphic equivalent, flood hazard report, school impact evaluation report, and phasing requirements for projects over 24 dwelling units. So this plan was reviewed by a number of departments, including me. Architectural Design Review Board approved with a number of stipulations, which have been largely addressed. I noted it in my report that they suggested alternatives to zelkova, which is a type of tree. They're still proposing to use that tree in certain areas of the parking lot. However, they also use elm, which is one of the recommended alternatives by the Architectural Design Review Board. It's gonna be difficult for me to go through the town engineer's comments because I believe, I, I don't believe, I, I know that the town engineer sent a response to, to comments and revisions today at 5:15. And it's kinda tough for me to go back and forth. I can note that town engineer did feel that most of their comments were addressed. Regarding a comment, so the original comment, "We recommend that the applicant's engineer inspect both the drainage basin and any outlet structure and infiltration system and incorporate recommendations for remediation onto the plans." Town engineer noted, "An inspection report was not provided. Recommended, recommendations should be made following the inspection and work should be performed as a condition of approval." The applicant, I mean, the town engineer made a May 2nd comment. "A note should be provided on the plan indicating that a stamped engineering plan will be required for the retaining wall designed prior to construction." And the town engineer's most recent memo states that that was not addressed. Town engineer's May 2nd comment, "The town engineers requested the use of a hydrodynamic separator for the parking area due to the groundwater protection permit, site designation the applicant has agreed to provide." And they also suggested that that be a condition of approval if it's approved. We received the memo yesterday from Pocket Duck Fire District, noting that all of their outstanding comments have been addressed. Now, I included in my report a section on loading zones in the groundwater protection overlay district. I wanted to bring this to the commission's attention for discussion and some consideration, if nothing else. Now, it was in some of my initial comments to the engineer that he demonstrated in the plan that they can accommodate loading zones that are required by the zoning regulations for all commercial uses. Loading zones, they're prescribed for, to quote the regulation, they're prescribed for all commercial uses requiring deliveries. I know that hotels require some deliveries. It seemed that it was right, you know, to, going literally by the zoning regulations to provide for loading zones in compliance with, with the regulation, which in this case would be three, since they're prescribed on a square footage basis. For loading zones, there is some interaction with the groundwater protection overlay district. Groundwater protection overlay district, you know, considering the things that might be loaded into a commercial building, especially, you know, for instance, a retail building or an industrial site or something like that, it requires that loading zones be roofed. Now, the site plan, it, it demonstrates one primary loading zone, which, you know, in my opinion, would be all that's really necessary for a hotel. And that's at, that's at the main entrance to the hotel. You know, things like laundry or soaps. I, I don't really see a whole lot of deliveries needing to be made that would require a loading zone at this hotel. The applicants demonstrated that in a plan. They've also demonstrated two remote loading zones in other areas of the property. So I, I wanted to bring this to the commission's attention because if you go by the most maximal interpretation of their zoning regulations, it would seem that they aren't really meeting it because you would need three loading zones that are all roofed. I did, just because I did not want this to become some bigger issue than it was, reached out to the town attorney for his opinion. If, you know, we could find a, a defensible way around this without having to, and, and I believe we can. I just wanted to be sure, just so it didn't result in an appeal or anything, without having to over-design a site. And, you know, having to accommodate unnecessary loading zones would obviously increase the amount of impervious area and roofed area and things like that.
Did you get an opinion from him?
Not yet.
He may be jetting the other way.
I had one other outstanding comment, which it, I was trying to read up on the screen. It might have been addressed on the plans that were revised for tonight. But just being able to extend that sidewalk the entire length of the property line south. So when the commission's ready to act on this application, my report contains a number of recommended stipulations, but I've also heard some tonight that would be added to that list. And I believe that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Any questions for Sam? So the big question is the loading docks.
That appears that's unresolved from Sam's perspective.
Would we like to wait and see how the town attorney weighs in on this? Right, and we have to close this hearing by the 20th.
20th of June. Of June.
Does that give the applicant the chance also to consider some of the comments that have been made here? And perhaps modify the plans to direct surface water away from adjacent properties? Maybe consider some of the comments that have been made and give them an opportunity to more fully address some of the comments that were made?
Well, I, I think so, and I'd like to see a night scape plan provided of the... Well, I think so, and I'd like to see a nightscape plan provided of the parking lot, of all four sides of the building. But my main concern, again, is also that loading.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how we get around that.
Yeah.
And yes, that's something we can bring up with in our regulation rewrite, but that's down the road.
Right.
For the immediate, I'd like to get Attorney Landergan's opinion on how we address this. Any comments from this side of it?
So the public hearing would remain open until presumably the first meeting in June?
Whenever Land, well, things are stacking up pretty heavily for 6/6, so it may have to wait till 6/20, the day, last day.
Last day.
Yeah, that's kind of tight.
The first-in, first-out kind of thing.
Well, we'll have to juggle that a little bit, but maybe 6/6.
Yeah. Well, yeah, okay. So the, so the public hearing remains open?
If we so, if we all want more information and...
Yeah, okay.
I think that's the right course of action. Keep it open, get that additional information.
So do we adjourn the public hearing? Continue it?
Continue it. Motion to me, continue with more information from Landergan and Sergio getting some details down in the nightscape. What are the details you want run off?
On the loading dock.
We'll have to get that from the attorney in order to get that.
Correct, correct.
But I'm wondering what kind of information we want on the plans, the revision.
And also that it gives them an opportunity to respond to some of the additional comments if they, if they so choose.
Right.
And the retaining walls, too, that's just, that retaining wall, the fence on it.
Show the fence.
Yeah, to see it, what it would look like.
That's a huge drop.
It's a big drop.
Yeah.
So is the commission saying they want additional details, Sean? For the retaining wall?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, so that would be, that would be an additional stipulation. I think the issue was, to what extent, you know, maybe not a design, but the architectural treatment of them. You know, is there, is there going to be stone on the exposed face, concrete on the unexposed face? Those were some of the questions, Sergio, that were raised. I don't think you have to submit a structural plan on the retaining wall. Traditionally, we allow the structural plans to follow, but the architectural treatment of the wall, you know, should be somehow described.
So that, well, at that height, doesn't it have to have its own building permit?
It does. It does. It has to be designed by a structural engineer. And sometimes that is done on the plans, and sometimes it is done as a shop drawing prior to the construction. It's always engineered.
Right, this one especially.
Can I ask a question? But you have, the commission has the ability to approve a wall of that height, correct? I don't have to go to any other, besides getting a building permit for it. If it meets, if it meets all the setback requirements, which I believe it does.
I believe so. I know at one point we said...
You have the purview of approving that wall, correct?
Everything that was over five feet needed to have a permit.
Might need a zoning permit, but that comes later.
Yeah. Any retaining wall, I believe, needs its own zoning permit. Retaining walls over five feet inside of a setback, which this partially is on that southern area of the parking lot, require a special use permit. This is already an application for a special use permit. I would just...
Fold it in?
This reminds me, you know, to inform the commission, I spoke about the commission's powers relative to special use permits. You would just be considering that retaining wall under those same set of powers as well, but I don't think it requires its own application or anything. It's already part of the special use permit site design plan.
But it should have a stamped drawing, as Chuck said, right?
Correct.
In front of this commission or for a building permit in the future?
For a building permit. For a building permit. I think what we're asking for is just additional details on the aesthetics of the wall.
Yeah, we can give you a section.
So like a typical, a typical section, but not a structurally engineered section.
Understood, yeah. We can provide that. Yes, that makes sense, along with the fence, the fence treatment.
Correct.
I had one other question. May I pose it now? In addition to your determination on if it's appropriate to have three loading zones, and I would implore you, I hope that with your zoning ordinance rewrite that you address this because it comes up time and time again on projects where a 50-by-12-foot loading zone is, and then multiple of them, is, they paint it with such a broad brush for commercial buildings. A hotel does not need three loading zones of this size. It barely needs one. The biggest delivery that you're going to get here is maybe a box truck and possibly, you know, a larger delivery very infrequently. Do we need to accommodate it? Absolutely. But I've been, I've had to battle with this on multiple sites throughout Stonington, so I hope that this gets some serious consideration for something that's going to be changed in the future. But with respect to this application, I hope that you can opine and make a decision that we have satisfactorily made the requirement. I admittedly, we just did what we needed to do to meet the three loading zones, and they're not in ideal locations, I'll admit that to you. But we were trying to meet the letter of the regulation, so what's good for the goose is good for the gander. The other item that I wanted to make sure that you could also make a determination, I don't know if it was brought up, was that they were supposed to be covered or roofed over? Was that, I don't know if you brought that up, Sam, in your, in your notes, but...
Yeah, I did touch on that. It's a requirement of the groundwater protection overlay district.
So is that something that you can make a decision on, or does that also need to be posed along with the number of loading zones to the town solicitor?
Well, I, the number of loading zones, as you said, you've met that.
Yep.
So it's the fact that they're, they're shown remotely and obviously not roofed over is kind of the issue we have to work out. But I, you know, I think if, if there can be some sort of determination that, you know, if a hotel, in the commission's opinion, is a commercial use not requiring deliveries or frequent deliveries or something like that, then that performance standard for loading zones just might not be applicable in the first place.
Okay. I would hope common sense would prevail on this. I know you have your regulations and sometimes get tunnel vision with them, but just to give this some perspective, the loading zones, we really can't roof them over. The most, let me start with, the most appropriate place for loading zone is next to the building, which is where we, where trucks would probably pull up in off-hours. And although a lot of hotels have porticos and covered spaces for pickup and drop-off, that's not the case with this one. The, it's not something that the, that the chain, the hotel chain requires. Also, the fire, fire department did not want to see any low overhangs because it'll impede for safety. So I wanted to just leave you with that, and I think the impetus of this covered loading zone is more for people, for commercial uses that are transporting things that are hazardous. And although a spill can happen with any type of vehicle that has, you know, that has oil or fuel associated with it, what's being delivered to this hotel are hotel linen's cleaning supplies. There's no pool in this hotel. That was one of the first comments that came from Sam, is that what do we have to worry about for hazardous materials? And first thing I think that came to mind was pool chemicals. There's no pool in this one. Mukesh has a pool in his other hotel, and he hates it every day because it's such a maintenance nightmare. So he says, no, he emphatically said, "No pool here. No pool, no hot tub." So besides that, they're using cleaning chemicals that you can find in any household, along with their linens that get delivered. So I just want to leave you with that, that I hope common sense can prevail on that aspect of things. Unless there's any other things, I don't necessarily disagree with giving us time to address some of these things, although I'm sure my client would be very happy to go away with a conditioned approval tonight. I can see where you're leaning, so if there's anything else I can answer this evening, I'd be happy to address it.
Thank you, Sergio.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to, to, how do we want to say, adjourn?
Continue.
Or continue the public hearing on this matter until the items that we discussed previously are addressed by the applicant.
Thank you, Ryan, and getting an opinion from our town attorney.
And the opinion from the town attorney.
Thank you, Ryan. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chuck. Is there further discussion on this?
Do you think, Mr. Chairman, we've adequately captured all the issues, the dust control, the town engineer's comments, the town attorney's input? That's captured in the discussion. So I think it's, you know, the reason we're continuing it is, is clear in just the reference to our discussion here tonight, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so I have no further comments.
All those in favor of continuing this public hearing? Now, I'd like to hear a motion for this particular...
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Fred. All those in favor?
Aye.